Let's start and I would very much welcome our guests. Today we've got Fiona Wall, who is Strategic Director of Neighborhoods, Michael Salmon, who is the Manchester Funds Programme Lead, Angela Harrington, Head of Work and Skills, and Shifali Kapoor, Head of Neighborhoods. And so I'm going to pass you over now to Fiona to do a brief update before we then go on to questions. Fiona?
Thank you. Thank you Nigel. I'm very pleased to be back with you. So we're now in week 11 since the lockdown began and we have started to see some of the restrictions being lifted. And just on cue, the usual Manchester weather has resumed. So I think we're getting a little bit back to normal. But I think we're a long way off where we need to get to. Importantly, the infection rate and the number of deaths in Manchester has continued to fall and the infection rate is around about 208 per 100,000 population, which I know still is a significant number, but is actually in a much better place than some areas of the country. The National Test and Trace has now launched, which you might have seen on the media. And Greater Manchester has been selected as one of 11 national beacon local authority areas to take for race programme. And this is really helpful because it builds on a wealth of skills and expertise in our local area, not just from our public health teams, but also from environmental health and working together across Greater Manchester, we will have a very sound test and trace system. One of the things that you can't have missed this week is the report that was published by Public Health England, which references the impact that COVID-19 has on our BAME population. And I know one of the questions on the session this afternoon relates to that. What I will say is that, you know, that information is at its early stages and we need to understand the law an awful lot more. But our public health colleagues are looking at that in detail. And we'll come back to that on that question. The recovery programme, which I talked about last time, has started. And there was another report that went to executive yesterday, which again I will share with Nigel to pass on to people who want to see that. And we've got work that is progressing to be too specifically on the Manchester refresh, which I did say last time was a fundamental part of our overall recovery programme. On a more practical level, work within the city centre and district centres is well underway to support businesses who are starting to reopen. And we are envisaging some non-essential retail and other outlets starting to open from next week. And there's a lot of work there going on around social distancing measures, extending walkways, et cetera. And there's much more information about that in the report that went to executive. Clearly this week has also seen some big issues linked to the death of George Floyd in America. And we know that that is impacting on our citizens and our residents in our city. And, you know, dealing with that alongside the restrictions being lifted and COVID-19 and how all that is impacting is quite significant. And we can't underestimate that. And what's really important though is collectively that our work for the future must continue to proactively challenge inequalities wherever they are. And to ensure that that is built into all our organisations and all our practices. And working with yourselves to do that would be really, really important for the future. So Nigel is very helpful, included in order questions in advance. And my colleagues Angela Shifali and Michael will assist in answering those. So happy for those to get underway Nigel.
Lovely. Thank you very much Fiona. So our first question today is from Samantha. If we can unmute Samantha. And she's from Widdonsheer Good Neighbours and she's going to be asking a question about co-production.
Hiya. Thank you. At the last meeting, you said co-production will be at the heart of everything. How do you see our older people who are not digitally connected or mobile being included? Thank you.
Okay. And I think Angela's going to pick up that particular question.
Yes, sure. I can pick up the digitally included bit of that. So I don't think for any of the work we're doing, we're thinking that everything will be remotely or virtually done once we get over this period. However, we have, I think, become aware, not just for older people, but for residents in the city. And I know you've got another question further down around this, that actually lack of access to technology and lack of skills to access it have been kind of key barriers in terms of people being able to do the basics for themselves. So, you know, it's no longer skills for work, it's skills for life really. So right down to food and some of the households were supplying food to. Some would like to and could afford to get food from other sources, but don't have the means to kind of access it, say supermarket slots. So we are working with skills team and libraries have a small project currently around kind of digital inclusion. And that's included working with community response line and setting some older people up with some basic kit and some basic skills to say connect with their families and to do the basics. But we know that we need to do kind of much more in that space if we are genuinely going to be able to connect with people digitally. But as I say, that's not going to be the only way that we are going to stay connected to residents in the city.
Samantha, do you want to come back on that?
No, I think that answers the question. Thank you.
Great. Okay, then I'm going to move on. And I'm going to be asking this question on behalf of one of the participants. And the question is COVID-19 has had a highly disproportionate impact on BAME communities. How are you addressing this?
Okay, so I'll pick this up as best I can because clearly it is a very complex issue. And what we haven't got is somebody from our public health team on the call. And I was going to offer that for a future call. One of our colleagues from Public Health could probably join us and assist in some of the health orientated answers. But clearly, I think, I think there was evidence as we started to see the impact of COVID-19, not just here, but in other places globally as well. And the impact that that was having on BAME communities, which is why the report was commissioned at government level. And our public health teams here have been looking at the level of incidents and the impact at local level as well. I haven't got any of those numbers here, but I'm sure that they'll be bringing something forward in the not too distant future. I think what the evidence seems to be saying is that people from BAME communities are not more likely to get COVID-19. But if they do get it, then the implications for them in a lot of cases has been a lot more significant and serious. And therefore are represented much higher in hospital admissions and in deaths, unfortunately. I think everyone reading that report will probably recognise that there's not more questions than answers at this stage. So there's an awful lot more work to do to understand those implications. And therefore what do you do about that in terms of response? There's a lot of work going on around advice and information. So how businesses can take account of issues related to either individuals or collectively. There's issues around the type of work that people might be doing and whether or not those put people more at risk. So all of those things employers have been asked to look in more detail at risk assessments. And certainly within the council, we've been undertaking risk assessments for all of our services and on an individual basis. Because whilst there's a collective there around BAME communities, within that there are very clearly individuals and different groups that may be being impacted in different ways as well. So I think this is a work in progress. It's a COVID-19 remains a very, very new disease, a very new phenomenon for all of us. And it's too early to give definitive answers to all of the issues and challenges that it's bringing. Or what COVID this is a very key consideration and one that we'll be looking at very closely as we move forward.
So Fiona, can I ask you how you have been consulting with BAME voluntary sector organisations about the impact on communities and kind of gathering the evidence from them about what's been happening within their communities?
So this is where we probably need a bit more input from public health because a lot of that has been gone through the public health routes directly. So I won't try to answer that particular part of the question at the moment. But I will get an update back from our public health colleagues that we can share with you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think Michael wants to come in as well.
Yeah, just to say, obviously, we're working together with colleagues in MHCC who have been bringing together various equality groups as well and have been specifically working with BAME voluntary organisations to work through their networks to try and bring that feedback and share that feedback with us as council colleagues as well. So that work is feeding into our equality work streams and cross cutting across all of the residents and communities work. And we will be progressing that more. And I also will be getting involved in some of that work as well. So we are also having that conversation with MHCC colleagues around how we bring some of that together to strengthen the position and to strengthen the support that we can offer to the sector as well.
And I think for a future meeting Nigel, we can probably bring some colleagues from MHCC and Public Health. That might be more helpful if you like to explore a bit more detail.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move on to the next question, which is from June Kelly, who is from Adrian Moss Warriors. And she's going to be asking about the shielded group. June?
Hi everyone. I just wondered, I'm one of the shielded members. And I just wondered what is going to be done to help support people like myself get back to work? As well as our time in lockdown? Because obviously it's been really hard. I mean, this week it's been nice. We've been allowed to actually go out and get some fresh air. But up to then, it's been 10 weeks of being locked in the house.
Yeah, so Shifali is our resident expert at the moment on what we know about the work with shielded populations. But do you want to go on?
Yeah, like you say Fiona, it's about what we know at the moment. And, you know, because this is a clinical definition and it's been defined through, from a national perspective, obviously, we rely on getting that information from government about what the future holds really for the shielded group. But like you say June, you know, obviously the announcement that took place last week, which means that you can go out for some daily exercise and stuff is obviously a step forward. We do understand that there's going to be a further announcement about the shielded group in the next, I think on the 15th of June. Obviously, at the moment, the guidance says that, you know, shielding is expected until the 30th of June. And so we don't know what's going to be in that announcement yet. But we do, we are trying to find out in advance so that we can be a bit more prepared. And obviously make sure our comms channels are well equipped to be able to help support people like yourselves and being able to get on with their daily routines. I think one of the things that Fiona alluded to before was about risk assessments and so on. And I think, you know, as people start to come back into the workplace, what we need to do is make sure that people are safe and that they are being, you know, that assessment is being done so that we know that any people of high risk are being kept safe really. And that's really paramount people's health. So, you know, I think the other thing that I have sent to Nigel and hopefully I'll circulate it is there's been a really helpful FAQ document that's been produced, which has been produced by the government. It's on the website. And actually that answers quite a lot of questions. And I think it's fairly comprehensive. So we'll make sure we circulate the link and hopefully that will help with some of the questions that you might have. But like you, we're still awaiting a bit more information about what's going to happen in the future.
June, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's really, that's good about going back to work. It's just also about being isolated. Is there anything else that the council can do to help support us, particularly, you know, when we are on our own at home? I mean, you get the call from NHS, sometimes you get a call, sometimes you don't. Sometimes it lasts 30 seconds, sometimes it lasts two or three minutes. But, you know, you're literally apart from now, even now when we're allowed out, we're only allowed to mix with one person, you know what I mean? And it's still, you know, only like going out to just get the exercise and stay in the way. And like I said, it's been 11 weeks now in isolation. And it looks like it's going to be quite a bit longer because obviously, you know, because of long-term health conditions, it's unlikely that we're going to get out again using opportunities to be able to go back to work.
Yeah, yeah, you know, obviously it's very difficult and, you know, you know, sympathise and, you know, with, I think, one of the things that is obviously on offer through the council's helpline is exactly that, some support with, you know, if people are feeling isolated and so on. And like you say, there's an option to self-refer through the NHS volunteer scheme, but there's also opportunities from a more local level and how we can tap you into and connect you with more localised offers. So if that's something that you're interested in, by all means, get in touch and we can make sure that we connect you into that support.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, June. I can see some people indicating that they want to speak. I am sorry, but it's almost impossible for me to do that because actually I can't see most people. But I am going to try and get through the questions and then ask as many other people if they want to ask questions from then after that. So I'm now going to go to Steve Playford, who's going to ask a question about IT and hardware.
Hi, I've been listening in to the MAC Community Explorers for North and Central and South Manchester. And I'm just reflecting back that a lot of the issues which came up is to do with IT, hardware and skills. And I know you mentioned last time in this feedback that there were grants. So I'm just wondering how people access those grants?
I'll take that if that's okay. So I think we, I strayed on it on the first question, but, you know, the sort of digital ride has become more acute during this period. And, you know, as I say, we know that there are some learners who are not accessing learners, learning. Some people are not accessing basic services or even support in terms of some of the points Shifali was saying around the shielded groups because they don't have technology and they don't have the skills to use it. So if I break those down into two skills, I think there is a fairly good offer across Manchester Adult Education Service and the college. So, you know, have a look at what that offer is like. And there will be some additional flexibility in the Greater Manchester's adult education budget around developing skills, particularly for people who might find themselves at the end of, hopefully none of you, at the end of furlough and, you know, not returning to work. And they might have started work in one context and, you know, now the context has completely changed. So there will be more there as well as money that's already in the system to get people into the kind of opportunities and the careers that are, you know, in growing demand in the city. In terms of the hardware and software, I'm afraid I am not aware of any grant system that's available. There's a gap, I think, for adults. So there are government schemes and GMCA schemes for young people. And they've been primarily targeted at year 10s for obvious reasons, but also some college students. The Manchester College has used its support funding during this period to support young people who might have some kit, but they don't actually have enough data to access learning online. So they've used that for where, you know, poverty is an issue and people can't afford and they don't have broadband at home to top up data and get students using that. But there is a gap in terms of adult learners. So I know from MACE where, so entry level learners or ESO learners or adult learners generally, you know, there's either no kit or one laptop, which is prioritised for young people in the house. And they don't get the access to it. But there aren't any government schemes to fund that. So we're looking at what we can do in the city. So we don't, so I don't want to raise. Yeah, so we're looking to see what the, whether there would be an option around that on the back of our planning for recovery work. But, you know, I agree, it is much needed.
Steve, do you want to come back on that?
Yeah, just briefly, I mean, in terms of resilience, you know, individuals need that resilience in terms of the resources and also in terms of being able to connect with people. But I think on behalf of, and I'm not speaking for MAC, but on behalf of just listening into all the different voluntary groups and the different sectors, I think there's a need for the council to publish where money can be got hold of, rather than sort of saying there's this and that, there's this and that. I think it'd be a good idea that if it was out to the public, but also out through MAC to those sectors, that you can apply to this, you can apply to that, there are these courses. So someone's actually done that work for them. And of course, it's not just about the virus, the coronavirus time. It's also very much about, there's clearly an IT poverty within Manchester. And I would pledge or plead with Manchester to put some funding into that.
If we had funding to put into it, I would love to invest some funding in that. But there isn't currently part. So we will have to try and make the case and see where we can get funding from. It won't be one source is what I suspect.
So there's a specific question Angela that Steve asked there, which I think is about where people can find all those IT training resources compiled in one place so that people can access them.
Sure, they're in two places currently. So the Manchester College website and the Manchester Adult Education Service website. And I can send you links to both of those if that's helpful.
Yeah, do they cover courses not done by those two agencies, but other things which are national, for instance?
No, it's mainly the courses done by those two agencies. There's a toolkit that the FE published about midway through the COVID thing, which has got quite a lot of digital access online. I'll get you a list of various connect websites that are useful to look at in terms of digital skills. In fact, the DFE one is quite good, probably from an organisational perspective as well as an individual perspective.
Thank you very much Angela and Steve. I'm now going to move on to Giselle from Giselle Borden from Northmore Community Association. She's going to be asking about grants. Have we found Giselle?
Hi everyone. Yep. Some VCSE organisations have been very hard hit by the crisis and need time to recover. Is the council thinking about providing grants that without hefty requirements allow groups time to recover?
Okay, got to ask Michael to pick up just in terms of grants of VCSE sector.
Hi everyone. So yeah, just following on some of the things that we're saying before. I hope people feel confident and reassured even by the way that my team and all the phone calls that have been made across the board. So I thank everyone who's been in contact with us. I and colleagues across the council are really sympathetic and acutely aware of the impact on our VCSE colleagues. And through our first phase of our approach, we've been trying to relax our current grant funding as much as possible. Going forward, we are doing some more work with MAC and other funders around, one, some of the impacts and really understanding the detail around that. So thank you to everyone who's been already having conversations with my team or Young Manchester or MAC. But we're also bringing together the various funding partners in Manchester to have a conversation about how we shape some of the grants going forward. As you know, the challenge in the trip, the challenge with all of this is how do you balance making this as flexible as possible? We've also supporting the organisations and meeting the needs of the residents and communities in the city. And I think the commonality between what the council is doing and what any voluntary organisation is, the people in the city. So we just need to balance that really. And it's not going to be a case of being able to completely restrict or remove everything, but making it as sensible as possible and understanding that organisations do need to be able to have the space to recover and be sustainable to be here at the end of this. So yeah, the short answer is our approach now is something that we'll carry forward. And all those people who know about how we work in the Manchester VCS programme and wider will know that that's how we work. And as we build and develop the conversation around the impact, but also the funding strategy, we'll be able to shape any future grants along those lines as well.
Okay, Giselle, do you want to respond to that?
I think it's about sort of how long that timeline actually is. Because as each month goes by, things become more and more and more critical. And then, you know, for some of us, we're starting to start working on our exit strategy.
Yeah, again, timelines is something that came up last time. And I think we did touch upon Fiona and I talking about the council's budget reset position. I know it's not necessarily a comfort to yourself, but obviously the council is also in a similar situation around its unexpected budget spend. So there is going to be a budget reset process and that will determine some of the council's contribution or support to any future funding. But I'm also part of the driver around having a voluntary sector strategic conversation with partners is to talk to the lottery and other funders in the city about what could be freed up immediately, which a lot of the emergency grant funds have done, and what could be built in the more medium to long term. And I'm confident through having that kind of strategic approach, we can move it along much quicker. But some of this is going to be dependent on what we can do as a council and what happens in that kind of budget resetting process. And also what we can influence with our partners such as MHCC, Mental Health Trust, Wheel of Manchester and others. So yeah, acutely aware of timelines. And our commitment is to try to share and communicate any decisions that are made as quickly as possible. And you just going to have to bear with us a little bit because we're also trying to wrestle with some significant spend that the council's had to do as well. And that's replicated nationally as well. So it's not just a council issue. But yeah, all that information is actively being fed into conversations. And we are trying to move at pace with the strategy and the partnership meeting, funding partnership meeting, which a conversation took place earlier this week.
Okay, thank you very much, Michael and Giselle. I'm now going to move on to John Bishden from the Salvation Army in Openshire. He's going to ask a question about food provision. John? I hope, yes, we're just waiting for you, John. Okay, well, we've done pretty well in terms of technical problems so far, haven't we? And so, oh yes, we've got you now, John.
Okay, you must have been the microphone. Okay, listen, the council food response scheme is feeding 2,000 people a day at the moment. How and when does the council see that ending? And how will that exit plan affect VCSE sector?
Okay, can I take that one?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. So yes, thank you. There's been a fairly phenomenal response in terms of food from organisations across the city and demand and need. So I just want to explain what we did first because I think that's important. And then that will also kind of help, I think, in terms of how we plan for recovery. So we want to be careful not to displace local provision. But it was clear really early on that local food banks and some of the food organisations couldn't continue with the model that they had in terms of safe social distancing. So they worked with us to develop a citywide model. So local food banks are supplied with food first and they deliver in their local areas according to their criteria like they always had. And then there's this couple of food organisations that do citywide delivery, bread and butter thing, open kitchen, fair share. So they pick up citywide. And then because demand was huge and also because we needed a response over weekends for emergency food supply, we ourselves in the city council opened up New Smithfield Market and using our staff volunteers largely, but also other business volunteers and other volunteers. We've staffed that as a seven day a week operation. So that provides top up where the capacity has been exhausted via local food banks and the citywide organisations, but there's still demand to meet. And it also provides for emergency food at the weekends. So you're right, we are doing about 2,000 food parcels a day. We've delivered 45,000 in total since the start of this crisis to 12,500 people, residents in the city. And about half of those are families.
people, residents in the city and about half of those are families with children. So and about, I think the critical thing, which comes back to some of the other issues and reflects kind of levels of poverty, is about 80% of the people accessing that requires on an ongoing basis. So at the moment, we're looking, we are planning for recovery, that's not sustainable, not least because half my team are doing food response and I need them to start doing other things as well. But it, you know, we need to be able to step back as the demand is still coming in and we need to be able to meet that demand. So we have worked with DEFRA and there's protected supermarket slots. So we'll be in danger of going around in circles there. So for people who are getting food parcels but can afford to pay, so they might be medically vulnerable, they might be shielded, they might be socially isolated, that is an offer that some people can and would wish to avail of to get more choice for start. We are also using, and I know MAC have been very helpful because you had a lot of volunteers, we're using the Manchester VIP volunteer programme. So you could have somebody who lives quite close to you who volunteer and pick up your shopping, pick up your list and pick up your shopping and, you know, do your shopping for you. So we're stepping that one off. And then we're having conversations about how we deal with the rest. We've got a group that involves some of the food organisations ourselves to look at how we can sustain and then step down safely. But I just want to give you some assurance, we do not want to create any cliff edges here. So we want to make sure that while this need is here at this scale, we're able to respond to it. Although there are some challenges about how we do that. And we want to step it down in a safe way, but we'll step it down in the way we grew it up. So, you know, we will close New Smithfield as soon as it's safe to do so and work with the food organisations to make sure they can deal with the level of demand that we might have at that point. Unknown factors, what will contact tracing do to demand? So, you know, if you've been furloughed or you've been and you've just gone back to work and then you've been told to stop work again, what might that do? What will the end of furlough do generally as unemployment levels rise in the city, as inevitably will they do? And people have to, you know, people have to sign on and maybe wait some time for the universal credit, depending on their levels of financial resilience. So they're the kind of factors we're considering. So hopefully that provides some comfort.
John, do you want to come back on that?
My only comment is I think that for some people, this will now be something that they budget for. If they're getting free food twice a week, it doesn't take long for you to budget the money you have to take account of that. I'm concerned that people are going to get a bit of a shock, however softly we take this away.
Yes, but I think we will be taking it, we will be taking it away because actually we'll be undermining some of the really good offers that were in the city before this and continue to be. So if you think about offers like the bread and butter thing and the community grocers or whatever. So they provide good quality food at a much reduced cost and that helps make that offer sustainable. So I think if we have to sustain the offer for the many, there will be, and people paid for that beforehand and were happy to pay for it. We asked people to make a contribution through We Love Manchester if they had paid for their food offer before on a similar basis. But, you know, people didn't. So I take your point, but, you know, people will have to rebudget for it.
Thank you, Angela. I don't think anybody's suggesting that it should go on endlessly. Now I'm going to go to Michelle Scatford, who's got a question, I believe.
Thanks, Nigel. I had to, but I'll be good. I'll be good. And I'll ask the one that hasn't been touched on because my one was around co-production. So that was touched on first. So I've got a question around employment support and whether there are any plans to re-evaluate or resit the city's work to ensure those residents who were already furthest away from the jobs market are not further disadvantaged in seeking work in what will be a very challenging economic climate.
This is Angela's day job really, isn't it, Angela?
It is. It's nice of her to date a day job banter. The answer, Michelle, is yes. So we're acutely aware that there were, you know, pre-COVID numbers of claimants in the city were probably the lowest since I've started working with the city, which is nearly 20 years. But we know that about 30,000 of people who were claiming out of work benefits were doing so because of a health-related condition or disability. And that, and that there were particular groups who will be further disadvantaged by this. So over 50, so we were concerned in the city by residents over the age of 50 who are of working age, so now 50 to 67, who have been out of the labour market, tend to have lower levels of skills and qualifications and poor health conditions. And we know that economic crisis hit young people particularly hard. And if you've got a period of unemployment when you're young, that affects your life chances much more adversely than if you have a period of unemployment in middle age or later on in your working life. So we are, as we're planning for recovery, really looking at what could our offer be? And one of the things we're advocating for at GM and through Co-Cities and with government is some scale-up kind of intermediate labour market type initiative. So we've got MyFutureILM, which I think you're aware of, Michelle, which we focused on niche young people aged 16 to 24 and has got good outcomes. And that's based on a month bootcamp and two months paid work experience and then varied according to needs of young people. But we're looking to see if we can scale something like that up so that actually if people, if as everybody anticipates, we're going to have huge numbers join these ranks have been unemployed and most of those people will be very work-ready and have a lot of experience. We need something that puts our residents who are already disadvantaged further up the queue.
Michelle, do you want to come back on that at all?
No, I mean, it's a huge discussion and one I think that will roll. So I'd go back to my point around co-production, I suppose, in terms of please involve us in those discussions as much as possible, that work in employment support to help you get a sense of what's going on out there for individuals.
Yeah.
Lovely. Okay, and I'm now going to go to Fergal.
Thanks, Nigel. And thank you, Fiona, as well. So my question, quite specifically a question really. So in partnership with a number of other frontline agencies, we've supported your colleagues in the homelessness directors to house over 250 rough sleepers over the last 10 weeks and continue to do so. With contact tracing coming on board now, one of the concerns that we've got is what happens to people that we work with who have been identified as having been in contact with somebody with COVID. And particularly for rough sleepers and people who are precariously housed, how do we support those people to self-isolate as they will be advised by public health? So one of the questions, one of the discussions that's been going around is around having a COVID-specific hostel. And there's been some resistance to that. And I was wondering how are we supposed to support people to self-isolate if they can't do so in their own homes or they haven't got homes to self-isolate in?
So I can pick that up. As you can imagine, there's no easy or straightforward answer to that. And it is one of the areas that we are looking at in terms of setting up the contract tracing and testing and service. That service is, you know, quite early on in its development, the expertise is clear and the model of how you do contact testing and tracing is clear. And there's lots of experience of how you do that because of things like environmental health, sexual diseases and things like that, that also use a similar tracing and testing and tracing model. But some of the challenges around COVID-19, and Angela referenced those, as did Shifali, is that there are, how it might work in the context of people being asked to then isolate for 14 days. When they might not have that provision to do that, and how that impacts both on that provision, but also on employment and other things. So the homeless population, rough sleeping population is very clear, like one of those groups that we need to work that through. And colleagues in homelessness team, public health and others are giving that thinking at the moment. But I won't say we've got a solution right now to that, but it's a very live issue.
So Fergal, very briefly, do you want to respond to that at all?
Yeah, just to say that, yeah, we appreciate how difficult it is, but it is a bit of an discussion that has been going on for a number of weeks now. And clearly the answer, I'll be able to clearly answer. One of the things that has been talked about is whether there should or should not be a COVID-19 specific hostel. And it's difficult to see how that can be argued against from a public health perspective, I suppose. I'll leave it here, really.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I suppose I haven't got that answer right in front of me because I wasn't expecting that question. So I can, I can get an update as to where we're up to with that thinking. But clearly the people that are on this call today haven't got that specific update on where we're at with that thinking here today.
So, okay, thank you very much, Fergal and Fiona. We are coming to the end of our time and so I am sorry for any questions that we haven't managed to answer. Just before we say goodbye to our guests, Fiona, is there anything else that you'd like to finish up with?
No, I think just to say thank you to everybody for taking the time out for posing questions and for coming on the call today. I think in these times, as we've said before, it's really difficult to keep in contact. And, you know, the use of this technology is the best thing that we've got really in replacing face-to-face discussions and meetings. And we as a council have committed with Nigel and MAC to do this on a regular basis and to bring different colleagues along. So letting Nigel know what the questions are quite early on helps us to then do our best to get the right people in the room. Like, you know, Angela's skill and expertise in the areas that she's well-versed in, I think, was very well received this afternoon. And I certainly wouldn't have been able to answer all those questions in that level of detail because it's not my area. So bringing the questions forward early, I think helps us to get the right people around the table.
So it just remains to say thank you very much to Angela, Shifali and Fiona and to all the people that ask questions and to Danielle and Cheryl. And I'm going to unmute everybody and so you can just clap. Lovely to see you all and I will submit next update if not afterwards.
Bye.